I'd like to call this meeting back to order, please. The first item is to go out of closed meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
See, it's one or the other.
Do I have a motion, second, to go out of closed meeting?
Second.
Been moved in second. A roll call, please.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
Aye. All right. The next item is certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened in closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Court of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County of Virginia hereby sortifies at best of its each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Been moved in second. A roll call, please.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Swinney?
I'll vote aye for the time that I was present.
All right. The next item is our invocation. If you'll please rise and we'll take a moment to think about what we have before us tonight. And following that will be the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Meadows.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
And the next item is public address. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak before the Board? There is nobody signed up, but if so, please step forward. And you have five minutes, please.
As he can speak.
Did you want to speak yet?
No.
Seeing no one, we will close the public address. We have no addendums.
Yes, sir.
The next item is consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
Aye. The next item is old business. Subject A is a grant application to the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
And the next item is new business. And subject A is the Law Library, transfer from Law Library to County Capital Projects. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to find out, is there any way in which any of this can cost us any extra money as far as the general public is concerned?
No, sir, not to my knowledge. This is funds that have been previously accumulated for use just for the Law Library. And so we're taking some of those funds and allocating them for capital costs related to the courthouse, but it should not...
That's what I had understood, but I don't want to get it out here where everybody else. I have the same understanding.
Yes, sir, because even after this transfer, there's there are funds left in the fund balance for the Law Library fund, so we're in good shape.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
And subject B is the dedication of right-of-way, providing access to the new Blacksburg High School and to the town of Blacksburg. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Do you have some... Is there any way in which we could turn that whole road over to Blacksburg?
The entry road to the school?
Yeah.
I think the plan is...
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, the plan is...
Is that what that does?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's that new road, this is dedicating that to the town. Then would they be responsible for the light it's going to take out to let people come in? Actually, what they did was they got revenue sharing from the VDOC for the intersection improvements and that light improvement. So we got we got all that at half price.
Right.
So they did us a favor there.
They applied for that.
We paid half of it. Yeah.
The school...
The state paid half, but without the town agreeing to do that, we were not eligible to give revenue sharing because it's in the town of Blacksburg.
Okay.
So they did a good job there.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
And next item is work session. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
Aye.
Chair for Lewis?
And our work session is on the health insurance consortium update.
Yep. And... If I can just provide a little bit of an introduction, as you're aware, one of the items that we spend a fair amount of time on each year from a staff perspective is on our benefits and one item is our health insurance. One thing that we want to talk to you a little bit about as we look at moving forward into the next fiscal year is perhaps the idea of self-insurance as opposed to going with a fully insured plan. And I'm going to turn it over to you. I'll let you introduce yourself to the Board and...
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Claire Holbrook and I'm a senior consultant with Wells Fargo Insurance Services. And we are the consultant who works with the New River Valley Benefits Consortium through strategy and marketing of plans and helping guide the consortium as they make decisions regarding the insurance. And we've had an ongoing discussion for the last probably year and a half with the members of the consortium regarding the funding arrangement of the plan. And my goal tonight is really just an education role to try to help explain the differences of the different funding arrangements that we're looking at. One is fully insured is the way the plan is funded to now, moving possibly or exploring the opportunity of moving into a self-insured arrangement and just taking the opportunity to explain it, give you an opportunity to ask questions and just work through it that way. So we'll start with kind of what are we talking about when we're talking about funding the plans? And we really are talking about who holds the risk for the health insurance plan. Today, the consortium is fully insured and what that means is that premiums are established by the carrier and the individual members of the consortium pay into their the health plan based on the premiums that are established. And then the carrier pays the claims as they are incurred and submitted for payment. What you'll look at when you look at the difference between a fully insured and self-insured funding is that the programs are composed of several different costs. And the big cost is the claim cost, and that's that blue at the bottom. And regardless of funding arrangement, your claims do not change. They're the same regardless of funding because people don't get sick based on the funding. So that's that big piece is the same and you have a responsibility to pay those claims under whichever funding arrangement. It's just a different mechanism. But under the fully insured, you have in the green box, it's administrative and administration and risk expense. You have that same green box under self-insured, but you'll notice that it's smaller because under a self-insured funding arrangement, the consortium assumes a large portion of the claim risk. So therefore, the risk charge that you're currently paying to the carrier goes away and is somewhat replaced by that reinsurance charge on the left on the right-hand side, and I'll explain that in a moment. On the left-hand side, instead of reinsurance, you have a pooling charge. And what that protects the consortium from is catastrophic loss. So if you have a really large claim by an individual, which is completely unpredictable, the carrier limits how much they put that claim into your experience when they project your rates for the next year. For the self-insured, we have reinsurance. And what that does is if you have a large claim, you actually only pay a certain amount of that claim up to a predetermined limit. And then the carrier pays the remainder of the claim and doesn't doesn't charge you against your experience. So that's kind of the risk there and the insurance that you're purchasing to protect you. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then the final piece is the state tax. And there are very different charges on state tax under a fully insured and self-insured arrangement. Under a fully insured arrangement, you pay a state tax premium of two and a quarter percent on the total premium dollars. On a self-insured funding arrangement, you only pay that state premium tax on the reinsurance charges because that's the only piece that the state recognizes as insurance because that's where you're protecting the risk. So that saves some money because you've got lower risk charge or lower administrative expenses and you've got lower state premium tax. So this is kind of a schematic of what does it look like in the big? And let's kind of talk a little about what some of these things up north I'm saying.
I'm sorry. Would you mind if we ask questions along the way?
No.
I just need a clarification on the chart you have at the bottom there, right above the risk, right above the line. You have lower and higher. What does that refer to, for the claims or risk?
That's the risk.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't point that out. A fully insured, you are transferring the risk to the carrier. So it is a lower risk for the members of the consortium to be in a fully insured arrangement because they the carrier comes in and sets the premium rates. And so they're assuming the risk that those rates are going to be enough to cover their claim costs, their administrative expenses, et cetera.
And that's and that's why the green bar on the full charge...
And that's why that green bar is so large because they're taking the risk that they've set the premiums correctly. On self-insured, you're taking the majority of the claim risk. You purchase reinsurance to protect yourself on those levels of risk. And so that brings down the overall piece just a small amount by going into a self-insured arrangement. And what the self-insured arrangement allows the consortium to do is really take more control over the program. When you are an insured program, the carrier sets the rules. They're at risk. When you are self-insured, you have a little more control if you want to do things to try to lower claim costs or do things a little bit more out of the box as an effort to try to get your hands around this big blue box and reduce it. You have more flexibility if you're self-insured. And that's been one of the drivers of the consortium of looking at a way of how can we manage this claim cost to the in the best way possible so we can bring in lower increases so we can manage this huge expense for all of the entities that are involved. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
If I'm not mistaken, the insurance company can make no more than 15%. Is that the correct amount?
Under the new kind of healthcare reform, is that what you're looking at right now? Yes, but what they look at it is they don't look at it on a group-by-group basis. They look at their total book of business of groups that are at least 100 employees up that are fully insured. And based on that total book of business, they need to have made no more than 15%. But on an individual group, there's no true up to that 15%. So one year, maybe they only make 10% on you, but maybe one year they make 20%. And that's how the laws, the new law is written.
I just wonder, where would that show up on this chart?
That would mean that anything above the blue box should equal no more than 15%. So anything that's not a claim cost would be fixed expense and that expense can't exceed 15% under the new healthcare reform law. But once again, it doesn't look at just the consortium like you're with Anthem today. It looks at all of Anthem's book of business that's over 100 employees.
Well, and I understand, I understand that you know...
So it's what we call the loss ratio. So it's a ratio of claims over premium and you want claims to be 85% or more.
Yeah, I know that they were trying real hard to figure out how to get there at the end of the year.
Yeah, it'll be very interesting because that first settlement settlements will come out, I think, the end of June or either the end of July. We'll start seeing the first results of how the loss ratios have worked for the carriers. And we haven't really seen anything yet to know if they if they make more than that, they have to give that money back to the whole book of business based on how much you paid into it. So it will be very interesting if that comes to be administratively.
And it makes you wonder, do they throw things in other than health, like just expenses that they have along the way to buy new cars or new office equipment or whatever?
Well, all of that is built, that is built...
I imagine that would come into it.
That is built into that administrative expense and that's why we try to manage it and make it as small as possible so that they're forced to be efficient and good good utilizers of the money they receive and be efficient.
I had a question.
Sure.
Going back to what Matt was asking you. It sounds like on the self-insured that you can set up things that you would want an insured person to do to be preventive. And then I'm wondering, like, is that setting the stage for like if you don't do this, then you don't get coverage?
No.
And which is which is greater out-of-pocket expense for the consumer of the insurance?
No, I'm not trying to really suggest any particular strategy. It's just that when you are a self-insured, you're the one bearing the risk. So you have more flexibility and it allows you to think of different ways that you can manage costs that maybe sometimes it's as simple as not just working with one carrier but saying, well, we'll let you do the medical insurance, but we're going to look at another carrier to do the prescription drug. Under an insured arrangement, you can't split those two pieces apart. But under self-insured, you could look at a different vendor for each of those. So there's it's just kind of opens the door to allow you more control over what is a substantial sum of dollars that right now the carrier kind of holds you you locked into because of their risk.
But may I ask a question? That also gives you, if you've got more control over what you're doing, then you're going to be able to say to your employees, you can have this or you can have that more so than Anthem, for instance, would do it. And that's not always a good thing.
Well, what to give, well, we all, we are all looking at it managing. And I will tell you that none of these conversations have gotten that far. We are looking at, is this an opportunity and is it an opportunity we want to pursue? And we know to do that, we need to kind of bring everybody that doesn't have to live in the healthcare world day to day, kind of what we mean by these...
Well, Claire, Claire, if I can add to that, too. In my previous experience, we went from a fully insured plan to a self-insured plan. And the big benefit to looking at a self-insured plan is it allows you, and you means the Board, not me and Karen, and I mean, the Board has to adopt the plan. It allows the Board to determine what you want to cover, how you want to cover it. And there may be situations, and I had this situation in Monroe, there were actually several coverages in Monroe that we added to the plan that when we were fully insured, the insurer wouldn't add. They said, well, we'll do that, but we're going to charge you a lot more for it. When we became fully insured, we decided in some areas, we weren't going to cover some things as high as we had in the past, but in other areas, we added benefits because the employee said, well, we don't ever use that very much, but it would be really nice if we had this coverage. And so one of the reasons we've begun this discussion is candidly, as a fully insured participant, the insurance companies are making a lot of money off of us. And it makes a lot of sense if we can somehow figure out a way to move forward with having more control of our own plan and have the ability to manage, perhaps even reduce, the cost.
Does that... But are you saying that when you add things in, who's going to pay for that? Is the employee? Is it the county? I mean, I...
Well, when we do a self-insured, when you do a self-insured plan, your motive isn't profit. If you're with a fully insured plan, the insurance company's in business to make money. If we do a full, if we go with a self-insured plan, which again, we're at least a year away from that, I want to make that clear. That's one reason we wanted Claire here tonight was to start just getting you to think about some of this. If you go to a self-insured plan, you have to buy reinsurance to cover some of that risk, but the rest of it is fully under your control. So it, there is not...
Well, you're really adding another layer of insurance. I know about reinsurance, for instance, working when the bottom fell out a few years ago. The reinsurance company, AIG, was.
Yeah.
And they are, you know, they were big guys. The real problem is paying an additional cost for reinsurance. Does that save you in the long run?
Let's hold that thought, if you don't mind, because we've got some slides that I think try to demonstrate that for you. And you can ask that question again if it doesn't answer that question because we've got some slides that actually look at the experience for the first year of the consortium with Anthem and kind of says, well, what would this look like under a self-insured arrangement?
And Claire, if I can add two things because I just want to make sure the Board understands the only reason, the only reason we would ever look at self-insurance versus full insurance is, is it an opportunity to save money long-term for the county? And secondly, does it give us a greater level of control of our policy that we don't have now? And that's that's one thing that I can't emphasize enough. Now, under a fully insured plan, if something comes up and there's a question, we don't get to decide whether it's covered or not. Anthem makes that decision for us or wherever we're with.
Yeah, I understand that. And you, you know, I know you've said it two or three different ways, but it is the same situation where she just now told me to hold on to my question because where there's potential for help and benefit, now you have two things this now, you said, and we as Board of Supervisors certainly are interested in that, but I'm interested in employees, too, because I think I know what it is to pay an awful lot for insurance and that you don't get it. And at the same time, have your coverage reduced because of whatever. Now, there's always the potential for good. There's also the potential for it not being so good for the employees. And that's what concerns me, too.
Well, I can assure you, at least from staff's perspective, we wouldn't even be talking about this if it wasn't an opportunity to benefit the employees. It's not, it's not a matter of simply trying to save money, although there is an opportunity perhaps to do that. But the biggest thing, and I'm sure Claire's going to get to this in a couple more slides, too, is the ability to have control over your plan versus having a third party telling you what your plan is.
But where do the plans come from?
Right.
I mean, are you dealing with United Healthcare, Anthem? Are you your own healthcare? You would, you would partner with an administrator, which is typically Anthem or United Healthcare or Southern Health or in any of the carriers or it could be a third-party administrator, a TPA, who would administer the program. We would, you would benefit from their negotiated discounts because you certainly don't want to give up those dollars that they've developed with those networks. So they, from an employee's perspective, it's transparent. They don't see a funding difference because you could keep your benefits exactly the same as they are today. You could improve them. You could, you know, you could make those decisions on your own. But so for the employee's perspective, it's pretty transparent, but you contract, instead of contracting with the carrier to pay all the claims and assume all the risk, you contract with the carrier just to assume the administrative, to pay the administrative piece. And then you pay the claims as they they come due versus paying a level monthly premium.
Wouldn't it be more advantageous to the county to have the very top level? Seems to me that, you know, you can, you can charge enough to take care of the bottom level. If somebody has a catastrophic injury or illness or you've had 10 people that have come down with whatever it may be, it seems to me that that top is where you'd want to have...
Well, that's...
And we do have protection for that.
Right.
And that's what the reinsurance would do. But you're exactly right. That's what you want to worry about is the things we can't predict. And it's the very serious illness or the bad accident or the the ones that really premature baby.
That's the ones that get you in trouble.
Exactly.
The others, you know, you can plenty nickel down them ass.
And I don't, and I don't know how deep we will go. I know when I was involved with the self-insurance program in Monroe, you have what's called specific stop-loss, which is for an individual claim. And then you have an aggregate stop-loss, which means if you reach a certain level, everything's covered above that. So you still, well, there it is.
There's also the new slide.
Good segue, I'm sorry.
There are two, there are two types of reinsurance that we would recommend that you purchase. The first one is the aggregate stop-loss and that covers the total bill. So that if there was something catastrophic in a very grand scale, you would protect yourself. Typically, it's, it's stated as a percent of what we expect claims to be. So it's typically said at either 115% or 125%. And what that means is that the organization takes on the risk for up to 15% above what was expected or up to 100, up to 25% above what is expected. So it's a corridor of additional risk. Anything that if it would exceed that level, the carrier would or the reinsurer would then take the risk on and you would pay it. So it protects you from the cat, the big overarching. And quite frankly, for a group the size of the consortium that's between 15 and 1600 individuals enrolled in the plan, employees enrolled, that risk of actually hitting that limit from an actuarial standpoint is very small. But it is a protection that's important, particularly in a public entity such as yourselves that you know you've got that bottom-line protection. The more important risk protection is that individual or specific stop-loss reinsurance. And that is for an individual claim. Typically, for a group your size, it might be a claim of up to $150,000 that would be paid for by the plan. But if it went above $150,000, then it's charged off and you don't pay it at all. It's actually a credit against your experience. So, and that's the very important because as you mentioned, you, nobody can predict who's going to have that large claim. The actuaries will tell you, based on your size, we would expect you to have this number of claims at this level, but we don't know who they are and when they're going to hit because we just don't know. So you buy this protection, you pay a separate fee, and then the carrier writes off anything above that limit. And that's how you kind of manage the risk within your plan because as you very succinctly put out there, is that most of those claims you can budget. You can figure out a way to budget and pay those because you're a large enough organization that there's some predictability to what your claims are going to be from year to year. And that's why we would look at a funding arrangement such as this. When you look at, there are pros and cons to both funding arrangements. So let's take a look at each of them and kind of talk a little bit about the advantages and disadvantages. Under a fully insured arrangement such as you have today, some of the advantages are you're paying a fixed monthly premium. That makes it really easy to budget. You can look at the premium, you can look at how many people are covered under your plan and you not kind of know what your, your annual expense is going to be. There is no additional financial risk above those premium payments. There's no cash settlement that ever comes into play. You pay the premiums and that you go on. And the carrier is responsible for meeting some of the compliance criteria such as HIPAA. They're more, they're more responsible for being compliant with HIPAA, the privacy and security components of HIPAA. and security components of HIPAA. They're more responsible for some of the other kind of legal, some of the healthcare reform, compliance issues fall on the carrier as a fully insured, versus if you're self-insured, it, it comes back to the organization that's self-insured. But there are some disadvantages to being fully insured. You are subject to state-mandated benefits. That means whenever the General Assembly passes a benefit, for example, and I'm not trying to say bad or good, because I happen to think this is actually a pretty good benefit, last year, they passed a benefit requiring a certain amount of coverage for autism, for children between ages two to six that are diagnosed with autism. The carriers are now mandated to provide benefits for that. As a fully insured plan, you have no choice but to accept all state-mandated benefits and put them in your plan, whether you agree with them or not. So that, when you're self-insured, you get to make that decision as to whether or not you would want. And a lot of times, my clients who are self-insured decide to adopt them, because they, they don't think it's a bad idea, but it's, it's, once again, it's a flexibility issue. In a good year, when you've had a good claims year, you don't get any credit back from the carrier. So there's no underwriting gain in a good year when you're fully insured. You, you know, they take, if they thought your claims were going to be $5 million, and they came in at $4 million, they don't pay you any of that money back. And, you know, there's no, on the one side, they don't charge you more when it's more, but they don't give you any credit back when it's less. You have a higher retention cost, and by that I mean your fixed fees. You have a higher state premium tax. You have a risk charge that goes away when you're self-insured. There are profit factors and margins that are built into an insured program that are much more limited than a self-insured program. You cannot get as much reporting of claims to help you manage the plan, and that's really important as we look at healthcare expenses going up, and as, as the consortium looks at, are there benefit designs that they could, could make that would help improve the health status of employees? Well, to do that, you've got to know what the underlying cost drivers are of your program. Do you have a high incidence of diabetes, or do you have a high incidence of heart, cardiac issues? You've got to be able to know that before you can come up with programs to address it. And we are unable to get as much claim reporting in an insured program as you can in a self-insured. The carrier is going to price that based on their formula, and that limits your ability to negotiate with the carrier. And that has been an issue that we, particularly with the consortium, have faced in the last couple of years, because quite frankly, you've had very positive claims experience, and you, but yet, we've had to really beat up any of them to try to get any kind of negotiation out of them, because they're holding the cards. There's less, less flexibility, we've talked about that. The carrier holds the incurred but not reported claim reserve. What that means is when you contract for a policy year, you're contracting, getting ready to contract for fiscal year 2013, that premium is established to cover all claims that are incurred during that time period. The claim may not be incurred until June 30th, 2013, but it's part of that policy year. But it doesn't all get paid during that policy year. So the incurred but not reported is the amount that we know is going to be paid after the end of the policy year, and in an insured arrangement, the carrier holds that, and in a self-insured arrangement, you can hold that, and you can have the cash flow on that, you can kind of control that a little bit more. And you are limited to standard plan designs, and I think that's what you were referring to. There's sometimes a better benefit you want to give the employee, but the carrier, and the carriers are very cost-conscious right now, and you will have seen that any benefit changes that have come across your plans in the last couple of years have been mandated by Anthem. We are going to change this co-pay to this, we are going to make this a co-insurance. They are the ones making those changes, and you've got to take them. And that's, that's something that you would have the opportunity to make a decision on your own if you were self-insured. And self-insured, you do the same thing here, there are advantages and disadvantages to that as well. Advantages, lower retention expenses. You won't have a risk fee. The profit factor is, and margins are greatly reduced. There are state premium tax savings, you will only pay it on the reinsurance fees instead of the total premium. You can make your own decision on state-mandated benefits. You have the ability to hold that incurred but not reported claim reserve. In years where you've had favorable experience, you get to hold that cash flow. You don't have to pass it on to the carrier. It can then fund your reserves and maybe help you pass along a lower rate increase in a year where claims aren't as favorable. You have much more flexibility in setting your plan design and plan administration, and your ability to get enhanced management reporting on utilization is, is much, much greater under self-insured. Disadvantages, the financial risk is ultimately the employer's, which in this case would be the entire consortium. You limit that by purchasing reinsurance. There are some potentials for lump-sum settlements at contract termination. I would say that's not nearly as common anymore, it's more you just pay claims as they come due. Fiduciary responsibility. You could choose as a self-insured, self-insured client to hold that fiduciary responsibility, or you can pay the carrier to assume that. As a public entity, I would recommend that you pay the carrier to maintain fiduciary liability. What that is saying is that if they have a claim, that somebody disagrees with how it's paid, and they want to argue it and fight it, that they're fighting that with the carrier and not with the consortium. They're the ones that have the clinical medical experts, you would want them to be handling that liability. You do have more responsibility for Cobra, compliance guidelines for things like Cobra and HIPAA, and now the new Patient Protection Affordable Care Act. One of the disadvantages, you, you can have adverse cash flow in years of unfavorable claims experience. That means when claims are higher than expected, you would be, once again, responsible for paying up to either 115% or 125%. And what we typically do with our clients in that way is we always make sure we're budgeting conservatively, so that you've got some margin built in, so that you, you have built a healthy plan and move forward from the beginning. But it is a little more difficult to budget, because it's not just paying those fixed premiums. So that kind of gives you, as you would see, anything that was an advantage on one becomes a disadvantage to the other. This is a little hard to see, but you probably see it better in your handout. When you look at the cost components of the funding arrangement, with, as I've mentioned, with fully insured, you pay premium rates that are established by the carrier for typically 12-month period of time. Under a self-insured plan, you don't pay premium rates, but we establish what we call budget rates, which look like premium rates. But you take those budget rates and you decide how much is the employer going to pay, and how much is the employee going to pay, in the exact same way you do with premiums today.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm talking about.
The claim reserve, it's established and it's held by the insurer. Under self-insured, it's held by the consortium. The risk under fully insured is assumed by the insurer. Under self-insured, it's assumed by the consortium. Retention, for fully insured, you're looking at administrative expense, premium tax on the total premium, and the risk charge. And on self-insured, you're looking at administrative expense for services rendered, premium tax on the reinsurance only, and the reinsurance premium. There are no accounting, some are fully insured, but they, you do get annual settlements with self-insured, and typically, you will also get a monthly accounting, so that you know throughout the year how your plan is running compared to what you've budgeted. Now, this is the illustration that, that I mentioned earlier about, when you compare fully insured to self-insured, what does it really look at? So what we did is we took your actual, the consortium's actual claims experience for July 2009 through June 2010, which was the last full year we had when we established this. And in the, the box at the top of the page, on the left-hand side, that first box, are the claims that were charged to the consortium. Then we broke out the pooling under the fully insured, or the reinsurance under the self-insured, so you have one or the other. The administrative expense risk, risk expense, excuse me, the state premium tax, and then the, therefore, the total expense. So for the consortium, in fiscal year 2010, the total expense for premiums was $10,994,369. Of that, we know 200 and almost 246,000 went to the state in the form of premium tax. Your administrative and risk, risk expense was $1,289,555. The pooling charge, that protection in your renewal underwriting against large claims, was almost $389,000, and the balance was what they charged as claims, quote-unquote, because it's all built into the premium of $9 million. If we looked at you self-insured and said, what actually happened? We know that the actual claims paid were $8,924,000. So the difference between that and the fully insured is a little bit of margin that they've built into their trend numbers. The reinsurance expense would be about $550,000, but the administrative and the risk, risk, risk expense drops down to about $1 million. The state tax expense drops dramatically down to $12,000, because it's only charged on that reinsurance number of $550,000 versus the $10 million that is charged on the fully insured. So in this one example, you had a favorable experience of being just about 5% below where it was expected, and that additional approximately $400,000 would have been money that would have been held by the consortium and not passed on to Anthem. And then what we did is said, well, what if you've been 15% above what we'd expected, or 15% below is kind of a bad case and a good, really, really good case? And you just kind of see the differences. And then graphically, at the bottom of the page, you see how the, the boxes shift based on a fully insured or a self-insured. And the state premium tax is so small in the self-insured, it doesn't really show up on these charts, because it's such a small number. That's a lot of numbers, can I answer any questions about that?
I have one, and it's not exactly on this, but correct me if I'm wrong, with a consortium, as we have it today, each member of the consortium gets rated, and some members, their premium may go up from one year if they're higher. Would we have the same thing here, or would this be every member of the consortium with an even?
That's a good question.
It would, we have, we really haven't locked into a final decision on that, because it can go in several different ways, and it would really depend on the vote of the consortium. But you're right, today, we get a renewal from Anthem, and we reallocate based on how well each entity did compared to the premium they paid in, and we make some adjustments. So nobody is totally responsible for their own claims experience, but if you had a bad year, you're going to pay more than if you had a good year. We could continue along those lines of self-insured, or we could, what I would advise against is saying, everybody pays their own claims. Because the reason you buy insurance is to bundle that risk, whether it's one person or a big group. So by the consortium combining together, you're able to spread the risk by limiting how much you, you share between the entities. And that's something that we recognize, that moving into, if we were to move into a new funding, we may have to reevaluate exactly how we did that. We'd have to think about kind of what happens if somebody chooses to leave the consortium. You would want them to be responsible for claim runout up to a certain point. We do that now with the insured program. A couple of years ago, we looked at the arrangement and, and kind of tweaked some of the limits within it to make it what was perceived to be fairer for all the group and the consortium members, voting members voted on it. So we relooked at reallocation formula from time to time. So probably, there would be some type of reallocation formula, whether it would mirror what is today, I couldn't say for sure.
As, as we're in right now, the, the group that you're looking at to form a consortium, who all is that, who does that cover?
Currently, it is Montgomery County, it's the town of Blacksburg, it's Puyallaski County, Puyallaski Schools, City of Radford, and the Montgomery County, Montgomery Regional Sanitation Waste Authority, I always call it MRSWA, but, and then the VPI Christiansburg Water.
Water Authority.
And...
So as you can see...
I guess, did we look into seeing if any of those...
We are talking...
...had a bad record?
Well, we look at that every year with the renewal, and it varies. This year, Montgomery County had a pretty good year. The Water Authority had a pretty bad year, but they're a very small group, less than 20 people enrolled, and, you know, it only takes one sick person to make that a bad year for them. There've been past years where your experience has been higher than others. It really does shift between the groups, and that's, that's...
I just wondered if there was a trend that you could spot, if, if you had a chart that showed such a trend.
And Claire, how, how long is this current, that may be a carrying question too, how long has this current consortium, how long has this group been together as a consortium? Since 2000?
The consortium's been together since 2000, and there's been very little exit. We had a little teen group, one of the small groups, like 23 people leave a few years ago, but it's been, it's been remarkably stable since 2000.
And another question I had was, what would it do if you had all the schools from all those localities that these are in do for a consortium?
Well, we've, we've addressed that with them, and we're certainly open to addressing it if they're interested. But, I mean, Montgomery Schools, if they were to come in, it would have a dramatic impact, because they're almost as large as the consortium is in total today in terms of enrollment. So they would, they would be a very, have a very large impact on the overall experience. Some of the other entities, we have, what I'm doing with you guys tonight, we've kind of worked with all of the members to try to get out and talk to their various boards and help do the same type of education. And so I think a couple of them have said, well, I wonder, like you, I wonder if Montgomery Schools, I wonder if Town of Christiansburg would be interested in this. We, when those guys, if they, and I think before Wells Fargo started working, we've been working with you since 2009, there was a, the prior consultant did work with Montgomery Schools, and they, they never kind of came to a decision to come in, but we're always open to it.
Well, the reason I would think that schools would be a good place to, to put forth a great effort, because they tend to be a younger group of people that hopefully have less things wrong with them.
Lot of eternity claims.
Well, I can tell you, when that discussion occurred, at the time, the Montgomery County School employees had good insurance, and what was being offered by the consortium was not as good.
Did they have had a very, very rich plan, and they've been able to hold on to that plan?
Because that was the benefit instead of the pay.
But we don't know where this one may be, if it was better, it may be something that, you know, you've got, whatever you have, you, if you want somebody to join it, you make it attractive to them to, to do so, so, you know, it's...
But the schools was much better.
Yeah, at one time, I don't think the schools is quite as good now as they were.
It's still, it's still...
I think it is.
The county finally came up to where the schools were, to be honest with you. When they had Southern Health and they had all this other stuff, it was not of the same quality, just to be honest about it.
But you think it's pretty close now?
Yes, I think it's...
We're closer, but you, you hit the nail on the head. As a general rule, the schools' employees are a younger, healthier group, so their plan has been a richer plan, but their experience hasn't been such. One of the discussions we have in here all the time is, I'd love for the county employees to have the same plan that the schools have, but because it's a much richer plan, our experience would shoot way up, and our premiums would shoot way up for our employees. So that's, that's the challenge when you mix those two groups.
Yeah, and I understand that, but by pulling those groups in, both Montgomery and Puyallaski and Radford, by pulling those in, suddenly, instead of the big guy in the group, we'd be the small guy in the group, and we would tend, I would think, to go more towards what they've got. I think it would, it would help us, very possibly, because you've got that number, that big number of people that are, as a general thing, are going to... -that big number of people that are, as a general thing, are going to-
Well, I think you make a good point that you would lower the overall risk of the group by lowering the average age of the group. But, so you know, it's clearly something we can look at and we're always open to those discussions when there's interest.
Absolutely.
Just a couple more slides that I think it's important when you think about the difference between fully insured and self insured. One of the biggest differences is the billing process. Under a fully insured, Anthem calculates the premium based on the rates in place for that year and the enrollment in place for that month. They issue a monthly bill, the consortium pays the bill, and then there's a reconciliation of, well, wait a minute, this person really came off, now I really added two people and they kind of reconcile that bill. It's very direct. With a self insured, typically Anthem would calculate an estimate of what your monthly expenses are going to be. They're going to look at, say for the year, we think you've got 12 million dollars in claims and we're going to divide that up and say, "Okay, we want you to wire to us a set amount the first three weeks, the first three Mondays of each month." Then they, you would pay that, then at the end of the month, they prepare an accounting statement and they say, "This is what claims actually were. Here's how much your administrative expense is, here's how much your state premium tax is, here's how much your reinsurance charge is based on the folks enrolled," because those are fixed fees. And then you would either settle up any additional amount that was due because you've only paid three weeks worth of claims. So typically, there's a settlement. And then you would pay based on that accounting statement. So instead of paying a level amount once a month, it's a very kind of different billing process. And it's important to think about that because that affects the people that pay the bills and they have to think about that and they have to think about how that's going to change. So I just want you to be aware of that because that is a bigger difference in terms of just how things operate. And then this last slide was just a potential timeline of what we've been doing. We've been talking about this and we kind of came to a head in July of last year to say, "Okay, let's move forward with talking with the various boards. Let's think about what we would need to do to put this in place." And we are going to kind of move forward with a meeting in June with the consortium members to bring this together to say, "Is it the right time? Our plan is to go to market for a proposal, an RFP, around December of this year." And we're trying to make a decision at that time as to whether or not we would look at a different funding arrangement. Regardless, we think the time is right to go to market and look at the market again. It's been about four years with Anthem and it's time to kind of look at that. Then we will kind of move through that process and if you were to move into a self insured plan, the earliest it would take place would be July of next year. And that's certainly not anything cast in concrete, but that was just a timeline as we were working through it.
Let me bring something up, means you've got to that, and that is, if I'm not very mistaken, our insurance is, your year is from December 31st, January 1st to December 31st. So you couldn't end it probably in a half year, though I doubt if-
Are you talking about the deductible, when the deductible starts?
I'm talking about our whole insurance policy.
Yeah, that's true. I think it's a calendar year deductible, but-
Yeah, it's a calendar year deductible. And what we do with that is what we have done before with other clients is get the claims experience to say, "We're going to hold you harmless." So if we make a change in July, if you've already met a certain part of your deductible from January to June, we make sure the new carrier had that experience so you wouldn't have to meet it again.
Just roll it forward.
You can roll it forward so that the employees are not-
So you would take over then in January rather than June?
Well, the policy actually renews in July, but you've got a calendar year deductible with Anthem.
Because if you were to go self, and been there, done that before, I tell you, if you go with a policy that starts in July, what you do is, at that point, you're self insured. So again, you have control of the administration of it. You get the deductible history from the carrier, in this case, it would be Anthem, and you just basically roll that forward. So if you've had, I'm just going to pick a number, if you'd had $300 out of pocket from January to June, July 1, that $300 would roll forward onto the self insured plan so you wouldn't have to meet it again. It would already be there.
And if you change fundings, there's no reason why you wouldn't necessarily end up with Anthem as your administrator. Then that makes it really easy because they've got all the claim history, you know, so they could take care of that.
I had a question. How long has this been discussed in the consortium?
We have had on and off discussions for, like I said, at least a year and a half, probably.
Because we've never been informed of those discussions. I don't, I think that's sort of, sort of interesting.
Well, I would say it's been building to this. We made the decision and we've been kind of working through getting the, what we felt was necessary to bring it to the boards and these meetings have been taking place over the last few months at the convenience of-
Well, were the other members informed of this along the way? Did they have advance warning? So you all have been discussing this for a year and a half and the members from the different localities have been there, but they haven't come back and told their people that this is even being discussed? I have a problem with that. The other thing I'm wondering is, I assume that the discussion has occurred because you're looking at ways to save money for the members and I understand that, but along the way, did anyone bother to see what localities within Virginia are self insured and what their, what their outcomes are? Are the people that are served by these self insured policies, are they happy with them?
We did-
They had problems with the claims? Because see, we need that kind of information. We know nothing of this. I'm completely shocked that we, that this is coming to us and it's been discussed for a year and a half and we didn't know about it. I guess that worries me. Because this is something that is so critical and so important and such a benefit in this day and time with, you know, not having salary increases and people with more and more work and, and we've worked really hard at our level to help keep our employees healthy. And I'm just surprised, I guess it's a little upsetting to me that this was discussed and we were not privy to it and I have a lot of questions and, and I don't, and I really want to know what other people in Virginia, I'm not talking about North Carolina, Arizona, in Virginia, what localities are using this? And I want to know, I guess we could go through VACO, but I need information.
And we can, I can tell you personally that I work with several public sector clients that are self insured. I work with Roanoke County in schools. I work with the County of Henrico in schools. In fact, Henrico, we went through a process such as this to move into a self insured arrangement five years ago. So they were, Roanoke has been self insured for many, many years.
Did they have more than six months advance warning?
Well, we have been, I would say-
Well, and I want to address that because one of the things that staff does all the time is evaluate various options. We haven't made any decisions. The whole purpose of having Claire here tonight was to introduce the subject to the board-
But she's talking about December doing it.
No ma'am. No ma'am. We put a timeline together that basically says, "If the board has an interest in this, this is a potential timeline for you to consider it." The only reason Claire's here tonight is to let you know that the consortium members, the staff members from the various jurisdictions have discussed this for a year and a half as a potential option that when we did look at our renewal for next year, beginning the year, fiscal year 2014, this may be something you want to consider. There was never an attempt to surprise anybody on this. If anything, we've spent quite a bit of time as a staff discussing, because I have a lot of concerns about what Supervisor Perkins brought up as well. I want everybody to clearly understand, the purpose of looking at self insurance is to be a better benefit for the employees, not, not limit them, but to give them a better benefit and control cost. One reason that it takes a while to evaluate this is when you start looking at the potential for self insurance, because I've been through this before, you have to take several years of experience. And the reason this first came up about a year and a half ago is some of us started to realize that, hey, when you look at what we're paying in premiums to Anthem every year versus what our actual claims experience has been, Anthem's making good money on us. And at some point, as we look at options to try to save money for the county, one of the options that we've talked to Claire and the folks with the consortium is, does it make sense to maybe shift that? Yes, you're shifting some risk, but if you can shift some of the benefit to that so that ultimately the overall cost to the county would be lower, it's something to consider. We've not made any decision at all to move forward with this. What Claire's done over the last, I guess, 30 to 60 days is go around to the other governing boards to let them know some of the discussion that staff has had, but if the majority of the governing boards think it's a bad idea, it'll go away real quick.
And yeah, certainly wasn't our intent to try to surprise anyone. We didn't want to come prematurely. So we've been periodically doing some analysis and providing that to the voting members of the consortium, the staff there, so that they, they could understand and kind of see and kind of hash out the pros and cons. So we were just really kind of feeling like it was at a point that the time was appropriate to begin this education. So it wasn't our intent to kind of drop something on anybody. It's always a lot the first time you hear it, but please ask any questions you have. That's why we're here and, you know, certainly in follow-up, we're always open to any discussion.
Absolutely.
Kind of related to that, if there was a decision by this board, for example, to go forward, would every other member stakeholder in the consortium have to agree in order for us, for the consortium to go out into the self insurance process? I mean, if Puyallaski Schools decides, "No, they don't want to do this," does that either torpedo the consortium or torpedo the process?
Yes, it would. You can't have two different funding arrangements within one plan. So there would have to be a consensus on what we would do moving forward with the funding arrangement.
Oh, who, okay, so you say, for administrative costs, you farm that out to someone, but the cost is lower, or do you take care of it yourself? I'm not sure how that saves money.
There are groups out there called third-party administrators and what you can do is, you basically hire a company that processes the claims, handles the claims, and many times those third-party administrators also have negotiated discounts with doctors and whatnot. So United Healthcare, Anthem, Cigna, all of those have a self insured-
Yeah, Anthem can operate as a third-party administrator in any self insured arrangement. And that's how the County of Roanoke uses them today.
Well, then, I would want to know how that works for people that are trying to process their claims, because one of the things you always hear about is, you know, how long it takes to get something maybe done when you're going back and forth with insurance. Well, I want to know, what's the difference if you have this farmed out to someone else? Like, how does it work in Roanoke? I want someone to come talk to me that's actually done it.
I can-
That's easy to do.
That brings me to another question. And that would be, for instance, if you had a medicine and, or if you were prescribed a medicine and whoever is issuing the medicine is not on their list as something that they will accept, then who makes the decision whether it goes on there or not? Is it, for instance, if Blue Cross is administrating it, is it their decision or is it someone's decision within the consortium?
I would say that that is a decision that gets made when you evaluate the plans. So Anthem's going to come out or United Healthcare or whoever is going to come out and say, "This is our standard list and this drug, as you know, tier one generic or tier two or tier three, meaning it's got the highest copay." With a fully insured, you take the list because you don't have a choice. With a self insured, if there was medications that we say, "No, we really think that's important enough to put it on the second tier because we want people to not, to not make a decision to not take their medicine because they can't afford the copay." You can work those out, but you typically do that at the beginning of the contract, not in the middle of the year when somebody would, you know, raise a flag that says, "I want my drug covered at a lower cost." We would probably at that point take it under advisement and you would do it, because what you have to be very careful is that you treat everybody the same and that you're not accused of discriminating. In fact, there are laws around that with self insurance, that you treat everybody fairly. So you have to kind of make that decision that if I'm going to make an exception, I'm going to make that exception for everybody going forward. I won't make an exception just for one individual and that protects you in that fiduciary responsibility.
But the chances are, you, the person that needs the medicine didn't know at the first of the year that they were going to need it.
Yeah, well, I recognize you-
I'll give you an example of something that just happened to me and you can tell me what would be the appropriate thing if we were self insured. I come down with the shingles about six weeks ago. They prescribed the medicine that was made for shingles, the only medicine made for shingles, and it was turned down when it got to the drugstore. Well, the drugstore calls me and tells me they can't fill my prescription. I in turn called the doctor's office and have the doctor to get ahold of the people that make the drugs, that put the drug out, to let them know that, you know, that's, that's the thing that you should be taking. Well, it took me a couple of days to get that done and to get the medicine that I needed. Now, if it would have been something that would have killed me in two days rather than make me still have the shingles six weeks later, then, you know, it might have been a real bad thing. In this case, it's going to foul up my whole summer, it looks like, because I probably, I've still got them and they still hurt me and I'm probably going to have them all summer. But, and I blame part of that on the fact of not being able to get medicine when it was prescribed for me. So what do you do?
Well, can I, this kind of brings up a question that I had, is that who makes these decisions? Is it, is it this board or is it the consortium?
I would say if it comes to individual decisions like that, it's very important that you set up kind of a protocol, I guess, that you don't, well, I talked earlier about whether you would be the fiduciary and that makes you legally liable for decisions you make. We always recommend that particularly our public sector organizations, that when they're self insured, that they let the carrier take the first part, they take that fiduciary role because, one, they have the doctors and the nurses and the clinical staff to make those decisions, because you don't want to be bothered with making every one of those decisions.
No, I'm sorry.
But you, you do have that opportunity to say, "Wait a minute, something's not right and we want to change it." And then you make that decision by saying, "Okay, if we really think that this medicine should have been on the drug list somewhere," which I would tend to agree that it should, "then we're going to make it available for everybody going forward, not just Mr. Creed. We're going to make it for everybody." And then you change the plan and you work with your administrator to make that change going forward. But typically, those decisions are made based on the members that sit on the consortium because Karen's representing your interests, she does a great job of it, by the way. She's always looking out for your interests and what she knows is important to Montgomery County. And so that would be barring any changes to the working document with the consortium, how those things would go forward.
Okay. That, that, that last part answers what I was trying to get at. I apologize for not making it clear, is that, so this board, for example, would not set what is covered within this policy?
This, this board would review the policy document that comes forward every year that basically outlines the plan and you would bless that, but you wouldn't have to write the plan.
But what if a member of the consortium does not, and this is, this is probably just a newbie question, not having dealt with this before, is that, you know, what if a member of the consortium, either this board or Puyallaski Schools or whoever decides, "No, this is not adequate, we want to add this," or "We want to take this away," do you have to get buy-in from this whole consortium?
That's what we've done. And they've managed successfully to do that for 12 years, which is, actually, probably the longest running one in the state of Virginia in terms of consortiums.
Okay, so this is how it's traditionally worked. So how is, I still don't understand, how is this different than what's going on? I mean, because, you know, if you look at this funding illustration on page seven, you know, I mean, basically, the majority of your savings are in state tax. I mean, nothing really is that different. You're saving $200,000 and that's not, that's not chump cash.
And you don't do it, you do it for, like I said, you do it to save money in the standpoint of, like, you guys really have run very well. When I compare your claims to premium, your loss ratio is running great.
Yeah.
We had to fight to get a 2% concession from Anthem this year on your renewal because they didn't want to come off it. We thought when we did- our own independent, we have underwriters doing independent projections, that you should have, you know, you should have had a lower than what we got kind of increase. But because they're fully, you're fully insured, they kind of draw the line in the sand and say, that's all we're going to do. They pick the factors that they use. When you're self-insured, we have more flexibility. We're always looking out for your best interest to make sure you fully fund it, and it's not a short-term, if I make this decision, I'm going to save a million dollars this year.
No, yeah.
What you look at is, when we look at the rate of health insurance increase, we call it trend. An annual trend runs around, right now, it's running around 9%. Your goal with self-insurance is, we're going to pull the margin that the carrier, the extra margin that the carrier is putting into your rates today, we're going to pull that back and let the consortium keep that money. And over time, we're going to look at more where you're really, your observed trends are. Maybe your observed trends are like 7%. Well, a 2% differential over five years makes a big difference in what that cost is five years out. And so that's where we hope to kind of bend that curve and low, we're never going to be able to reverse the rate of increase in health insurance, but if we can lower it a few percent every year, it just over time makes that number grow at a much slower rate. And that's our long-term goal, is to kind of pull the margin out and let you benefit from that. And then take that additional flexibility and give the consortium control to work it. I mean, like, Montgomery County is probably, of all the groups in the consortium, doing the best job with wellness. But can you share some of your practices so that the other entities might say, hey, this is our plan, we want to do things to try to get more people involved in staying as healthy as they can, and bringing in more wellness to all of the plans, because that can only help everybody.
Yeah, I think, I'm just not understanding where this flexibility is coming from. If basically, the consortium is going to run fundamentally the same as it was before, if we're turning over fiduciary, you're recommending that if we do this, we turn over fiduciary responsibility to the insurance company, the insurance company is setting its policies on what it's going to cover, or not, whereas we can still negotiate as we were before? I just don't, I just don't understand how this is changing.
I think that does sound kind of counterintuitive. I agree with you. The fiduciary piece comes into when somebody wants to make an exception to the plan, or they want to fight an individual claim as, I don't think you paid that claim correctly. Whereas really, the overwhelming majority of claims pass through the system. And I know, Ms. Biggs, you mentioned, how do I know how they get paid? They get paid the exact same way they get paid in an insured arrangement. The doctors file them largely electronically now, the hospitals file, and they roll through the system, and those claim processors, they're looking at what your plan of benefits are, but they don't really know whether you're self-insured or fully insured. It's transparent to them, the same way it's kind of transparent to your members, your employees. They just know that their card, this is what their plan design is. Where you get flexibility is, I'm trying to remember a specific, Karen, what was one of the benefits that Anthem changed this year? They didn't do a lot this year, but I know in the past it does.
They gave us a new copay for medicine that we didn't have before. We suddenly, we didn't have it in our first-year agreement, but now we've got a $50.
Yeah, like, they made a change this year, that they're no longer going to cover impacted wisdom teeth. That doesn't affect a lot of people, but the person that it does affect, it's a big deal.
It does me.
Yeah, and they made that decision, and you didn't have the right to say, well, I don't really like that. I really want you to still cover impacted wisdom teeth. And with self-insured...
But we would in some way with the self-insured plan?
You could do that. You could say, no, I still want to cover that. Or they may come in and say, you have the standard...
If the consortium agrees to it.
Key Care 15. And they may come in and say, we want to put a deductible on Key Care 15. Doesn't have one today, but next year it's gonna. Insured, you've got to take that deductible. Self-insured, you can say, no, I don't want it, or I only want it to be half as much as what you're saying it's going to be.
But then do they come right back at you then and say it's going to be higher than for you to have?
Well, what we would do is estimate what the cost value would be, the actuarial value of that benefit, and say, okay, if you want to take the plan as they've offered, your cost is going to be here. If you want to leave the plan the way it is, your cost is going to be a little bit higher, and you just make that cost-benefit decision. Do I want to lower the premium, or no, it's more important that, particularly with what I work with a lot with my public sector clients over the last few years, has been, we don't have any extra money in the budget. We want to keep benefits where we are because we can't give the raises we want to give. So we want to maintain benefits. So it allows you to do that instead of being forced to maybe take some changes you didn't want to take. So that's kind of the way some of the flexibility works. It's a long-term approach. It's not a short term. I think you see value immediately, but you're not going to see, like, millions of dollars of savings, because the big number is that claim number. And what we try to do is kind of affect that over the long term and take the margin and the unnecessary fees or the profit margins, reduce those to what the carrier can earn. Because right now, if they say your claims are $10 million and they come in at eight, or they come in at nine, they keep the difference. If you're self-insured, and maybe we budget for $10 million, but they come in at nine, then you've got money to set aside for reserves that you don't have to worry about. You know, you've got some cushion to play. But it's not money that you hand it over to the carrier and never see again. And that's kind of the difference.
This is all through the consortium, making those kinds of decisions that you're talking about?
Well, they're looking at it on behalf of the boards, but they know that this is a decision that they have to have each of their boards sign off on. They know that they can't make that decision without that.
But they would be making decisions that involve medical prescription decisions as laypeople.
Not, no more than what they're doing today.
And then they would be, they would take this to their third party and say, this is what we as a consortium want you to do. Is that what you're saying? And then they would go to the third, this third party that they're hiring, and they'd say, work out a deal that you can do this?
Can I help with that a little bit?
Yeah.
Typically, what third part, what you do if you look to go self-insured is you put out a proposal. This is prior experience. It may be different with the consortium, I don't know. You put out a proposal and say, we're soliciting third-party administrators. We're thinking about going self-insured. We'd like to get proposals from third-party administrators on what you charge for the administrative cost, for the prices for reinsurance. And then you also ask them for, they've many times negotiated discounted plans with the various providers, and you want that ability too. One thing you don't want to do, one thing that you do have an advantage with a fully insured plan is, those guys already have negotiated discounts with all the doctors, but these TPAs have done the same thing. So you try to find a plan that has a strong discount, but they already have a plan. You don't, the consortium doesn't sit down and say, okay, let's write a, let's write a health insurance proposal. They already have a plan similar to what Anthem has with their key care plans and whatnot. The difference is, if you're self-insured, you have the ability to kind of tweak that to make it what you would, what the group would rather see as they're on. The other thing I wanted to add with a third-party administrator, and we found this to be true when I was in Monroe, when we switched from fully insured to self-insured, when you're self-insured and you have a third-party administrator, that third-party administrator is looking at those claims on your behalf, because they know every dollar their approval's coming out of your pocket for premium expenses. So they were much more judicious in the way they reviewed claims than when they're fully insured.
Well, do you have to take the lowest bidder for a...
It's negotiated service.
I mean, you want to have somebody that has a good, you know, reputation for doing that?
It's a service. It's not a...
And we look at all of that. We look at where they say your claims cost would come in based on the value of their network discounts, which is the big dollars. We want, don't want to lose discount value. We look at who's proposing the most aggressive fixed fees, like administrative expense. What are you getting for that? What are the reinsurance fees? So you want to negotiate those fixed fees really hard, because that's the piece that you can, that is repetitive. And then you look at the total piece. You look at what services. You look at what clients they have today. You look at their, you know, what they're, what guarantees they'll bring to the table in terms of performance, in terms of financial guarantees. And we kind of look at the whole package, and it's based on whatever evaluation criteria goes into the RFP. So it's, yes, cost is a component of it, but it's not the total.
So you hire these people for how long?
The "we" is the consortium, and then Wells Fargo acts as, kind of, we do the analysis. We do a lot of the, as the consultant, we do the financial analysis, and we do the analysis of the RFP components, and then bring that as a report to the consortium members, and we discuss it and evaluate it. And then the consortium scores it and makes the award decision. The consultant doesn't do that.
Let me ask a question here for this. I like it when I get it to a place I think I might save a dollar. You might not. The administrator that you've been talking about, that you would put out something and say, hey, we need, we're thinking about doing this, and we need to know what you're going to do it for. Well, is it crude, or is it against the law, or is it something wrong once you decide who you're going to hire to give them a contract that not only says what they're going to get, but what we might share with them forever, you know, if they save us $100,000, we give them an extra $50,000 for whatever. You know, it seemed to me like that would be a very good time to make a dollar if you was going to ever do so.
Well, I don't know the law on that, but I can tell you, the thing you don't want to happen is to go self-insured and then have your employees screaming that half their claims are getting denied.
Denied, so that money could be paid.
You want to ensure that there's good quality. What we do, try to negotiate the best fees on behalf of our clients. We want to go out with an administrative fee and get guarantees on how much that fee can increase year over year, or will they be willing to hold it flat for two to three years? I mean, they're, so we try to, because that's the, that's the more controllable part of your contract.
And that's where I'm sitting here listening to, is that that is the controllable part.
And that's where we do, we do work on your behalf very hard to try to negotiate the best deal we can get for you.
But, you know, everybody negotiates a little better if they're going to get part of it.
We don't usually give it back to them.
How long do you keep this third party, like, when you hire them, or they hire by the consortium for a certain amount of time, like a year, two years? What if you hire them for two years and you don't like them after a year, you have to keep them for...
No. Typically, the contract is written that it's renewable every 12 months. You could cancel it after 12 months. And I've seen entities do different things. Some do one year with up to four renewals. Some do a three-year contract with two renewals. But even if it's a three-year contract, you can cancel after one year.
Who evaluates their performance?
They, a lot of it, some of it's self-reported. Some of it is there, like, we go out with a list of performance guarantees. We expect 98% of all claims to be paid within 30 days. We expect 98% financial accuracy, and they report back. But then we have other guarantees that say, we expect you to return phone calls from the benefit administration team within 24 hours, or we expect this kind of service to, you know, the Karens and those folks that are administering those plans. And then Karen and them get to say whether or not they think they met the level of standard on the performance guarantee. We also usually include some kind of survey of the members, and what they'll do is agree to do a random survey of a certain percent of your population and get their service. So we're trying to look at all components of the service and make sure that they're giving back. And we don't want, we put a financial penalty if they don't meet the guarantee, but we always say, we don't want them to not make the guarantee, because what we want is you to have the best service you can get, so people aren't calling you and complaining about the health insurance, you know, or calling Karen and complaining. So that's kind of the, it's fairly complex, a lot of components, because it's such a big piece of everybody's life.
It seems to me you'd get the same service if you negotiated a price with whoever, whatever doctor or hospital that you were going to. It wouldn't have anything to do with what the individual's experience would be. If that had already been predetermined, then all they do is go in and it happens. I don't see you'd have a hard time making me believe that it would affect anyone other than the ones that decided that they would do it for less.
Do most of these current plans, are they pretty flexible about using, letting their client to use all the different services so they're not confined to, you have to go to this hospital, or you have to go to that hospital, you have to go to this doctor, you can't go to that doctor?
Most of the carriers in Virginia today have really what I would call broad-based networks. You know, over time, we've seen everybody try to try a smaller niche network or a big one. I think they've realized that in this market, what is important is that you have a broad network. So you have the HCA facilities, you have the Corillian facilities, you have all the major doctors. You don't try to kind of carve out. So typically, all of the carriers that are competing for business in this area of the state have very broad-based, larger networks, because they know that's really important. They're not going to get business, because people aren't going to put their business with a smaller network. So what we do is we look at disruption, because we know that when we market a plan, we can't be sure you're going to stay with the carrier you're with today. So we get a list from your current carrier of, say, the top 200 or 300 physicians, primary care physicians, top 200 or 300 specialists, and the top facilities. And we go out to the market and we say, tell us if these providers participate in your network. And that's one of the criteria. Are the doctors that your people are using today, are they going to still be able to use them tomorrow? And that's a very important component in our overall evaluation, to make sure there's limited disruption.
What about if you're out of state on vacation and end up in the hospital?
We look at what the carriers do for that. You're in a PPO plan, and that means, like with Anthem, it's a national plan, so as long as you hit a Blue Cross PPO doctor out of state, you're good. And I would think that most of the plans we would look at for you, that's how the plan would operate. There would, we always make sure that there's some kind of out-of-area coverage for when you're traveling, if you've got a student that's living out of state, those kind of things. You want to make sure that they have coverage.
Anything else?
No, just that, can we get some information from people that are doing this?
Oh, absolutely. Again, that's, I just wanted to emphasize that one more time before we close. The whole purpose of the work session tonight was to make the board aware that this has been something that's discussed, has been discussed at a staff level, but as we start looking at the next fiscal year, we wanted to start bringing it to the boards. And I know you've presented to several of the other governing bodies, and we wanted you guys to be aware of this. Again, no decisions tonight, tomorrow, or even next month, but as we move forward into the new fiscal year, we wanted you to be aware of this discussion and to be able to start getting information for you.
So Wells Fargo, you're like the consultant to the consortium. Is that what you do?
Yes.
And, you don't have any, you don't have any kind of thing going on behind the scenes about this is...
No vested interest.
You think this is better. You're doing this research because the consortium wanted you to do it.
Correct.
Wells Fargo is not connected in any way, shape, or form to, they'd rather have self-insured versus, okay. Why don't you make that plain to the people that are listening?
Yeah, yeah. No, we have no relationship in that respect. In fact, our relationship with the consortium is a fee relationship. We don't get paid based on which carrier you put it with or anything like that. It's strictly to provide the expertise of the industry to the consortium members.
Ms. Perkins?
A couple of questions. So Wells Fargo's been doing this since 2009?
Um, this time around. Wells Fargo, before we were Wells Fargo, actually assisted with the, putting the consortium together back in 2000. The business moved from who we were...
This is Wells Fargo Financial Services?
It's Wells Fargo Insurance Services, but we are a subsidiary of the Wells Fargo Bank.
Yes. Karen, this is totally off the subject for a moment. When do we have to have that blood profile into you?
June 20th is the date that we say it, but we were...
To keep from having to pay, see, that was something out of the blue that just happened. But June 20th is when I have to have it to you, so that you're not going to charge me $25 a month. That was something I'm not happy about.
And let me ask a question while we got you sitting there. As I said a while ago, I have shingles. Do they want my blood while I've got shingles, or am I supposed to wait until it goes away?
I would say your health risk assessment, if you...
I would say your health risk assessment, you haven't had it done yet?
No, just because of this.
I would just come and talk with Vicky about that, but I don't think it would be okay to do, I'm not that familiar with what shingles does.
I'm not either, but it sure hurts.
It's the only thing I know for sure.
Okay. I just wanted to double check on that one because I couldn't remember. Now that I have you, I have to ask when I can remember because I'm at advanced age and therefore it's a little hard to remember.
Well, I want to thank you for answering all my questions. If I'm here, I'll have more, but I didn't mean to come down hard on you, but I, I'm the one that doesn't like to be taken by surprise.
That was certainly not our intent and I'm okay.
You know, like I think if something was discussed for a year and a half, maybe we could have had a little heads up like, hey, you know, this idea's floating around and we're discussing it just so you're aware that, you know, and just sort of had a few general ideas about it. Because like I knew nothing about it and.
And that was, that was the purpose of tonight.
Yeah. But like this is like a lot at one time and then, you know, you have this timeline to do it. And like I'm sitting here going, well, I'm not prepared to do anything because I've got too many questions and I'm not an expert in this, I'm not trained in this. But I'm representing employees that it's going to be an impact on their life if we choose whichever way to go. And that's a really heavy responsibility and I take it seriously. So that's why you saw the reaction from me that you did.
Well, that's fine, I appreciate it.
Because it's like that, I have a passion and I just can't help it. So it's not, it's not directed towards you, it's just directed towards, you know, that's just me and I have to help.
Well, I'm sorry we kind of came across that way because that certainly wasn't our intent. But I do appreciate your time. I know it's, it's a lot to absorb and we're just committed to helping folks understand and move forward in any, whatever direction is best for the group. That's all our intent is. And thank you.
No other questions?
Not yet.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
No, I'm sure there'll be questions.
I fear any more, I'm sure of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to go out of work session?
So.
Second and roll call please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chairwoman Willis?
Aye.
And the next item on the agenda is the county attorney's report.
Uh, no report, Mr. Chair.
County administrator's report?
No report this evening, sir.
Supervisor Gabriel?
Yeah, just a couple of brief things. I went to the school board meeting where they determined their budget, oh, seven hours of that meeting. So, and you all know what happened, so I don't need to go through all seven hours of that. I did want to however, just mention two things very briefly is that we all got these, I just wanted to point out these lovely brochures that the students at Blacksburg High, Michelle Walters, ad design and graphics class put together. And they're, they're really, really wonderful and glad they're being distributed in libraries. They're great representation and congratulations to them for winning the national award for their, their design skills. The other thing too, I just want to thank staff especially for putting together the new email address so that our constituents can now send an email to one address and it'll be distributed to all of us simultaneously.
Glad to do it.
And it's already up on the website and, you know, we can start directing people to that. So thank you for that. And that's, that's all I have.
Now Supervisor Tuck and Supervisor Brown are absent tonight. I should have mentioned this earlier. Your two graduations, one a grandson of Supervisor Brown and the son of Supervisor Tuck. Ms. Biggs?
Well, I also want to thank staff for the email because that actually came from one of the citizens that came to one of our board meetings during budget time and asked if we could not do that. So that's, I think that's a big help. Just a couple of things. I have this information from the community services board. They did an interesting piece. It's called the Community Return on Investment Report for the NRV Community Services. And I thought maybe you all might like to have a copy of it. And they're going to try to put it into a format where it can be sort of a PR piece to let people know exactly what comes from the investment in that board. So I'm going to give that to Craig to run off for you all. And then I did attend the MBC Development Corporation meeting. We had a meeting today at four and they approved a loan to Prochem to help them purchase some equipment. So we did do that. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is this is a time of year, every two years where on the VACO Board of Directors, they, they want us to have meetings throughout the state with our elected General Assembly representatives. And we did this about two years ago and Ms. Perkins and I, and I believe it was Mr. Mars and the county administrator went down to Chatham, Virginia. And to be honest, it wasn't very well attended. And so since I represent you on the VACO board and Hugh Pendleton is the other representative, our region 10 is Avon Maddox, Campbell, Floyd, Franklin, Halifax, Henry, Montgomery, Patrick and Pennsylvania County. So when you think about the spread out of that, it's pretty spread out. So what we talked about doing is a little bit different. And since we as our board are going to be meeting with our legislators, it was decided that I would contact the other counties and see if they were doing the same thing and if they were happy with that. And if not, and they wanted to have some kind of event and invite VACO staff, then I would get back to VACO staff about that. So I wanted to get your feelings. Like are you all okay with having our people just come and address us? Or do you want any participation from VACO staff in the future? Or is everybody okay with what we're doing?
I think just the people that are supposed to be reporting back to us is all that we should really have because we don't really have a whole lot of time, it seems, when they're here.
Right.
To ask any questions or anything.
And yeah, I think that was what, what your expression, Gary, is what Hugh and I felt the same way about because the region is so big and it's represented by I don't even know how many members in the General Assembly that when you try to get all those people at one place, it just doesn't happen.
Can't do it.
Because you're talking about all the senators and all the delegates.
I would think that if there are specific issues that we might be concerned about, particularly let's say what was in our legislative program or other issues, that we could all benefit from VACO staff maybe giving us information with regard to actually what was done by the General Assembly in those areas. Then when we meet with our own people, which is what I prefer to do, I think we could then have a little more information about how they voted and why they voted as they did or whether those issues are really beneficial to us in our particular area or not.
Because I know some of our people did vote to take money out of the general fund to gift to transportation even though the Senate overruled that.
Right.
So those were some things that we made clear that we didn't want to happen. And so I think that opens up a discussion when they do come and, you know, we can reemphasize again to them that this is real important that we keep the money in the general fund for services and another means needs to be found for transportation.
Right. So, well, it's obvious Virginia hasn't really done anything to help transportation very much. But like I say, I think VACO could probably give us some information that we could use in terms of talking with our own legislators.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Perkins?
I really have no report. I attended quite a few meetings since we last met. One, the only thing I really wanted to bring up is that Richard Kaywood came to the Economic Development Commission and gave us a really good update. Again, I know he was here not long ago, but he did bring some pictures and things with him of the blasting situation out on 81 and talked with us about how and what projects really are going forward in our region. One of the statements he made was, we always have a plan, you know, we're thinking ahead of time in this region and this area. And so what happens is that frequently we get the dregs, we get what's left over from Northern Virginia or Eastern Virginia or whatever it is. And they can't always agree on what's going on. So if there's extra money out there, then he said, we just raise our hand and say, we have a plan, could we please have that money? And sometimes it'll work that way. And I just think that it would be very beneficial to us to see and hear from him again and ask him to bring that same presentation, maybe condense just a little bit before our board. And we can look at, you know, the 114 extension. He would talk again about the Southgate Tech Interchange. I don't know. He has talked a little bit about Route 8, a little bit about what was going on in Salem with what has taken forever on that eastern, no, western end of Roanoke County. There are a number of things that he discussed with the commission that I thought we could hear again and it would be beneficial to us particularly from transportation point of view because roads are very important. Also, I went to the PDC and the PDC has just put out a transportation report, as you all know, and I've been doing some studies with that. There's, it's more with carriers, but roads are the big, are a big part of transportation. So there are a couple of programs there that I think will be worth our while to talk with Kevin about, you know, about and see whether or not they might be beneficial to us too just in terms of delegations. And then the other part would be from the airport authority to talk again. We need an update on what's going on there with the changing in the roads and the timeframe for those things. There, there seems to be quite a bit going on in our whole area that we just don't think about or we don't realize has moved, have moved, those things have moved forward as quickly as we originally anticipated that they would. So while the state of Virginia is having a big problem, there are some funding mechanisms out there for, not for secondary roads and not for other roads, but certainly on some of these larger projects.
Ms. Greed?
No report.
Mr. Bliss, may I just add one thing? Since Mr. Gabriel brought this up, should we send a thank you from the board?
Yes.
That you could sign? Okay. Because.
Hi, the board.
I think it should be very.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. One is my monthly help report. I gave presentations to Giles County a week ago last Thursday and they will consider it for their next meeting, the resolution. And to Puyallaw County last Monday and they'll defer to their next meeting whether they'll accept the resolution or not. I've also been working on our secondary roads a little bit as far as this alternative pavement. I've been talking about the last couple of meetings. And it appears that VDOT is going to be working with us and getting a sample area to use it this summer and see how it gets through the first winter. So I.
That's a good road for them.
Yeah. I talked to Dave Clark about it and he's anxious and ready to go. So as I get more information, I'll let the board know that this will be for things like dirt roads and things of that nature and bring the cost way down. If it works, it works. If it doesn't.
Yeah, I think that's good that you're trying it because remember the information we got said you really have to look at for the kind of soil that you have and the ground that you have and all of that.
Yeah. Well, there's a company up in Boston that tells, we tell them what we've got and they tell us what we need to make it work. And I'm pretty sure that's the one they're going to go with right now. And we're going to use a sample road. And I'd like to get it, you know, know that it works or not before we lay these parking lots around the schools.
Is there any cost to us or is VDOT covering that?
VDOT's going to cover that.
Okay.
As far as I know. I mean, it's in their bag. It's in their bag.
That may could make it nothing if it didn't do for roads. It might be good for parking lots.
Right. Yeah. And that's all I've got. If there's no other business before the board or move to adjourn?
Second.
Moving second and roll call please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Greed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chairwoman Willis?